Okay, let's, wherever that is. Call the Assembly Work Session, Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Work Session to order. It's Thursday, April 14th, 2022, 6:30 PM. We are in the Assembly Chambers. First item up is Citizens Comments, and I should tell anybody who wishes to make comments that at work sessions, we don't keep an official record. If you want your comments to be on official record, our next meeting, the 21st, which is next Thursday, would be the time to put them on record. With that, we'll open Citizens Comments. You can call in at 907-486-3231, our toll-free, 855-492-9202. Please sign in and speak, speak your name clearly so that we know who you are. And if you're calling in, please turn off your listening device so we don't get feedback. You're on.
Hey, I just want to thank you. My name's Court Neff. I want to thank you guys for working on the ordinance change for the emergency operations. And I know it takes a bit of work. I know quite a few of you guys have been thinking about working on it, and I do appreciate that. I have concerns about the way it was handled last time, not having any oversight, and I know you guys feel the same a lot, that we just kind of gave up control to another bureaucracy. And my opinion is that hopefully, if you can come up with a tighter leash on them, a much tighter leash than versus, you know, like 60 days, 90 day review period or whatever like that, just some kind of a way to keep it a little tighter because of the potential for abuse, for whatever, it's not the public's not really getting properly treated, or cronyism, money just being thrown away because of something like that. This is just standard things that it's our, you know, our responsibility and our privilege to be able to have a voice in. And then the other thing I have is the budget. Thank you for working on that. And I know there was a big rosy picture painted of the budget last time, and hopefully it works out that way. I do have some concerns that it'll be hard to hold back sponging when it sounds like we got maybe quite a bit of money, and it looks good. But there are a lot of people that are not working that have been, you know, working more in the past, and there are a lot of people in our community, I think, that are hurting in any expense raised. I mean, getting our taxes raised, or garbage fees raised, or any of that sort of thing, more expensive, I think this is a pretty bad time to be. If you can at all, hold back or restrain yourselves, try to save money, and maybe if just roll it over the next year somehow or anything, it's just my opinion, it'd be a good time to do that. So thanks a lot for your listening to me patiently.
Thanks, Court.
You're welcome.
Do we have any call-ins? Anybody else wishing to address the Assembly?
Green light, there we go. Mayor Roberts and members of the Assembly, I wanted to see that, it's wonderful to see Nova sitting over there. I feel so much more comfortable. Thank you. Thank you. She's a tremendous asset to the borough and to our community, so it's great to see her here again. So just as you consider the budgetary issues, I just wanted to remind you of the needs of our people in our community, and especially those nonprofits in our community that really do rely on the individual grants that we do get. And I wanted to thank you for, last year, we were awarded a Granite Independent Living Center where we were able to buy Mobi mats, which are two huge mats that you can roll out on uneven ground or on the beaches so that wheelchairs can be accessible to the beach. So we were able to do that, and this last weekend, when the sun was shining, we definitely used them, so thank you very much. And we were able to get a beach wheelchair, so it was kind of a hand-me-down donation, so that was really good, so we could access both the Mobi mats and to get people out on the beach. So thank you very much. We do have an event coming up May 14th at Abercrombie, and so it's going to be kind of our trails kickoff, so you're all welcome to that. So thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Anybody else wishing to address the Assembly? Any call-ins? Okay, seeing none, we will move into our agenda for this evening. And first item on the agenda is a discussion of the Carlick and Larson Bay School. Roxanne.
Well, we were asked to add this to the agenda, to have a discussion item about what to do with the Carlick and Larson Bay Schools and the fact that they are unfortunately not operational at this point. And we have information that we'll provide via Matt Gandell, because he has information about the expense that we've had to pay to upkeep these buildings in the interim. And then we also have our attorney, Scott Brand Erickson, available, so he can go over some options about what we can do about the matter, if we, how we wish to proceed with the shutdown of the school and the management of the property. So I'll start with Matt, if you're able to walk us through what we go through with maintaining.
Good evening. So you guys should all have a handout, if you don't, let me know. But the, of the expenses for the last few years, the borough has paid to keep the schools, the buildings, open. They're substantial, but that's just sort of informational information for you guys. You know, we do have ongoing maintenance issues at both buildings, and we're trying to get people out to the villages, and that's always a challenge. We're still dealing with that stuff. Boiler issues at both schools, some sprinkler issues at Larson Bay, the list goes on, and just general maintenance to keep the buildings in decent shape. From talking to Dave, you know, the way, the way I think he's looking at it, there's kind of three options here for these buildings. One is to keep the status quo and do what we've been doing. The other is to make a deal with the local governments to somehow take over the buildings and operate them themselves. And then the third would be to just kind of close them. That has not worked out well in the past. You know, if you shut a building down, it just, it's going to fall apart, so probably not the best option, but I'll kind of leave that up to you guys to discuss, and obviously Roxanne and Scott. But if any questions, I'm happy to try to answer.
Okay, this was put on the, on the agenda, because we've been talking about what do we want to do and what our options are. Do we want to hear from Scott Erickson, or do we want to take questions from the Assembly at this point? Scott, what are our options? If I remember, it's kind of convoluted, a lot of the property that it's on there is actually federally bequeathed as a school site, so I don't know that we can sign it over to anybody, so what can you tell us about that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's a good question, and it is complicated. The, some of the moving parts, in November of 2018, for each of the two schools, the school district superintendent sent a letter to the borough manager saying, here, we're turning over these schools to you, that they'd removed things that they wanted, but they were leaving some items there for future use with the hope that the school may be reopened in the future. The first question, I think, to sort out is whether, in fact, the school district has made the determination to close the schools under the, under the state statutes, and as, as the entitled 14 of the state statutes, there are certain responsibilities of the borough, and there are certain responsibilities of the school district. And the courts have interpreted those statutes to say that it is the school district that has the authority to decide whether or not a school should be closed. And in, in the regulations regarding education, there's a specific process for the school district to go through to get permission to close a school when it's a, when it's a school in a rural area such as this. I don't know for a fact whether the school district went through that process in 2018, whether the school board has had an official vote to close these two schools. And that fact is relevant, because up until they closed the schools, the division of responsibility is between the borough and the school district, is that the school district is responsible for routine maintenance, and the borough is responsible for capital construction, major maintenance projects. So in the 2018 letters where the school district said, here are the, here are the keys, we're going to turn over the electricity, water, garbage, fuel, et cetera, to the borough, actually, the school district would retain responsibility for those unless they were fully closing the school. The other complicating factor is on the deeds to these properties, when they were deeded to the borough, both parcels had deed restrictions, that it was for school purposes, and if they ceased to be used for school purposes, then ownership would go to someone else. On the Larson Bay School parcel, the deed said that if the, if it ceased to be operated as a school, then automatically it would go to the city, municipality of Larson Bay. Subsequently, the municipality of Larson Bay executed a quick claim deed to the borough, but whether that negates their right to receive the building back or not will require a little bit more research. In the Carlick case, the, the deed says that the property goes to the state if it, if the school is closed. So the first thing to figure out is, has the school officially been closed by the school district following the procedures called for in the state regulations? And then that would dictate, one, who's responsible for the utilities and regular maintenance, and, two, what happens with the title to the property?
Wow, okay. We got Larry Ledoux in the audience. Larry, do you know if the official steps were taken to close Larson Bay and Carlick?
Yes.
They were, so they are officially closed.
Yes, and I'd be happy to send the information to the attorney.
Yeah, would you do that, please? Because we're going to be moving forward with this. So Scott, Larry says yes, that it has officially been closed. They went through the steps that were necessary to officially close it. So from what I heard from you, now our choices are, we can, it's not being used as a school, it actually should revert to Larson Bay, City of Larson Bay, depending on how that quick claim deed comes out, or to the State of Alaska and Carlick. Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yes, that, those, reverting to those two entities is one of the possibilities. However, if those entities would agree with the borough, there could be some other disposition of the property. On the Carlick one, the deed in the, in the, there are particular terms for it, but wording the deed in the Carlick one calls for the property to automatically transfer, but I don't know that the state wants it or recognizes that, and so there may be some room for discussion, but the borough couldn't do anything with it on its own without sorting that out, in terms of if you wanted to, if you wanted to convey it to someone other than the state. On the Larson Bay one, the, you know, I was just reviewing some of the deeds, I'm not sure that I've seen all of the relevant documents, and it would be also relevant whether the City of Larson Bay takes the position that, okay, if the school is closed, we get it now, or if they say, no, we don't want it. And there would be the opportunity for an agreement between the two parties for what to do with it.
Questions from the Assembly. Scott Smalley.
What do we do if we want to have the option of opening the school in the future? Because we suddenly have kids in one of those villages, or both of those villages. Is there some intermediate track that we can go on with the school district and the communities? Seems unlikely that if we give it away to the state, for example, in the case of Carlick, that we'd be able to use it as a school in the future.
What I think you would need to do, if the, if the school district has closed the buildings and, and handled out with the Department of Education, then the school district is pretty much out of it. And the question is, will the, the parties that may have a reversionary interest to the property, a right to receive the property, agree to either the borough holding it, or there being some interim use of the property with the potential for it being used as a school, as a school in the future? And the terms of that are going to depend upon what, what could be agreed to, in the case of the Carlick parcel, between the state and the borough, and if there's a third party that's going to be caretaking it in the meantime, that third party, and in the case of Larson Bay School, between the municipality of Larson Bay and the borough.
Any other questions from the Assembly? Any other discussion from the Assembly, what we're going to do with this? Jeff?
I guess a question through you to the manager, if I could. What is the expense associated with us just closing the building, shutting down the utilities? And I understand that you've got reopening costs and issues associated with that, but what would the cost of that be? My concern is if we turn these buildings over to the communities, and we then end up with school-aged students back in the, in the community, this price tag, as much as I don't like looking at this and paying for the utilities in that regard, is far cheaper than, than looking at rebuilding a school in these communities, and I don't see that happening. So I, I'm not sure I'm interested in handing them off to somebody else, but I guess the question I have is, what, what's the cost on an annual basis to shut them down and board them up?
Scott, the fact that the school district has officially shut the schools down, that, does that not automatically revert now to those schools being disposed of as stated in the agreements when they were built, meaning going back to the community or going back to the state? Do we have a right to hold those schools after they've been closed?
You would not necessarily have a right unless the, the parties that have the right to, to receive them would agree. And the, for example, on the Carlick school, when the deed says that if the school closes, it automatically goes to the state, if the state wanted to say, we want that building, the borough couldn't prevent that from happening. You would need to have the, the state agree for the borough to, to hold it and mothball it, or whatever you want to do with it. With the, with the Larson Bay one, I'm not as certain, because in the Larson Bay deed, subsequent to the deed that had that reversionary clause, the, the City of Larson Bay quick-claimed its interest in Lot 2, Block 11, to the borough, and whether that was effective to convey their reversionary right or not, I'm not certain without a little more checking.
Okay.
If they have given up their reversionary right, then in Larson Bay, the borough would have greater leeway to just hang on to it.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I don't know if, and through the mayor, this is a question for Matt or for Larry. I know that there, several of the villages have educational aids that help students taking correspondence courses, and I, oh gosh, I think there's one in Carlick, I don't know about Larson Bay. Is the facility or the, the internet in these buildings used at all to support that educational support for these correspondence students in the villages?
That'd be a question for Larry.
We have two students in Carlick that we provide services for. We have a four-hour aide, and we provide internet. When a school reaches 10 students or below, we have to close it. We're not closing the school, we're closing the program, because the state won't support it as a school if you go under 10. We support those two kids because they need the support. We had two in Larson Bay, but they moved away. Periodically, in Carlick, almost every year, we're told that they're going to have enough students to open the school. They haven't showed up, but we're always waiting, you know, for that to happen. Previously, we've closed Chinniac in the past, in Carlick, in the past. So when we go below 10, then we have to close, because the state withdraws support for the school. They still pay for the students, they don't pay for the school, so we can't afford to manage it as a school. So when they closed Chinniac, we just waited it out, and the kids came back, and same thing happened in Carlick many years ago, when the population went down. Port Lyons got very close, and we were just right on the edge with 10 students during our count. Akiak, at different times, has almost been closed too. Just, it goes like this. Our concern, of course, is that in both communities, we have fiber optic cable and potential for great economic development in those areas, probably with, you know, the right people, you know, working on it. So there's a good potential you'd have a school, and if we did go over 10, the borough would have to take responsibility for finding a school for them, unless they went to the state and said, give us money for a school, because we got rid of the other one. So anyway, that's where we are, and I can't speak for the board, because we just found out this was on the agenda, so. And we, the board hasn't taken any position on the buildings, and as the attorney said, they don't really have a say in it at this point, because they belong to the borough. But my hope is that those communities will grow, and they will have a place to educate the kids at this point in time, so that's sort of where we are. We can answer any questions that you have or documentation.
So is, is the Carlick building, so being used by the educational aid?
Yes. Yes, the borough has allowed us to use the facility, and I think their tribal organization is, has some help there, too. And we would do the same, we would request the same in Larson Bay if we had students. They're on distance programming, but, you know, by themselves, that doesn't work very well, so we provide that support.
Thank you.
Scott Smalley.
Can I ask Matt what the difference is between mothballing it and not doing anything in terms of longevity of the building? Useful longevity?
By not, what do you mean by not doing anything?
We just walk away, board up the windows and leave. No heat, no electricity?
You know, you can, you can, we could make our best efforts to protect the building for the future and walk away, you know, you know, drain, pipe, you know, the whole thing. I think part of the concern would be, we really have no way of monitoring it out there, and that's what happened, you know, Larry referenced, the, Carlick was closed a few years ago, and that's kind of what happened, you know. Things happened to the building after the fact, and when they came back to reopen it, there was a lot of work that had to be done to, to restore the building. Granted, that's less expensive than building a new building, but that would be the concern, is just it's, it's a big unknown, how long it's going to stay closed, you know, what condition it's going to be in, how often are we going to go out and check it and see what it's like, you know, are we going to do periodic maintenance even though it's closed, just to keep the walls standing? So I, I guess, I'm not sure I could really answer your question. your question. That's a tough thing to answer.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, Scott Erickson, I keep going back to the point that we really don't own the schools right now. Once they're closed, they're supposed to revert unless that quick claim deed actually gives us Larson Bay. So no matter what we do, if we're going to hold on to these schools, we need to get permission with the state and with the Larson Bay City Council, unless you find that that quick claim deed indeed gives us that school and the rights to do with as we want. Would that be a correct statement?
I believe so. I would recommend that what the borough is choosing to do, if it's something other than turning the property over to the party that may have a reversionary interest, that you communicate with them and get their consent. What would probably be the best, if the borough wants to be free from that reversionary interest, is to see if they will release that reversionary interest. If the state would quick claim to the borough its interest in the property, whatever interest it may have. And on the Larson Bay property, we may want to get a title report just to see what a title company says there are as far as reversionary rights in the property or whether the quick claim deed, the parcel was, it was subdivided into two lots, and the borough quick claimed one to Larson Bay and Larson Bay quick claimed the other to the borough. And so I'm thinking that that one's probably resolved. But if a title company said different in their title report, then we would need to sort it out.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the Assembly? Scott Orton.
Thank you. It's a quagmire.
Yes.
On it. Karlik was closed once before, and it was literally boarded up, sealed off, was broken into, vandalized in the community. And then we ended up going in there having to do all those repairs to open it back up as a school. The unfortunate thing on all the schools in the villages around Kodiak is if we were to build schools for the student population that is in those communities right now, none of the schools would be as large as they are. None of them. And it's costing the community of Kodiak, the Kodiak Island Borough, a tremendous amount to maintain these. Karlik, there is no property tax generated from Karlik. So that $92,000 in 2021 and $99,000 in 2020, that all comes out of general fund here. And that's a problem. Now, when I hear that Karlik's actually being used, then it's not really closed to me. So therefore, it's more of an in-kind service type of arrangement in my mind. That raises, to me, it raises that question because it is being used for educational purposes on there. Larson Bay right now is not being used for anything, but if it should be, then it falls under that in my mind also. We can possibly go another year, but we're going to have to sometime in the next year, make a decision whether the communities are going to want to take over these buildings for community purposes. Because I can't justify maintaining them. So then it comes down to, it becomes, with the experience we've had, it becomes cheaper to remove them, dispose of it. And then should you come up with 10 students, you move in a modular, which is a double Y for a classroom. Because that's all that's ever been provided in the timber, in the lumber camps on a fog neck or any other place. You don't have the big gyms that you have. So the communities are going to need to look at stepping up on these schools because it's a problem.
Would it be safe to say, would the Assembly agree to direct the manager to go ahead and order title reports on these properties, just so we know exactly where we are, and then to share them with our attorney, and then look at our legal options here? Also, we maybe have to contact the state and the community of Larson Bay, the city of Larson Bay. Before we make any decisions, I agree with Scott, we could probably drag this out another year, but these schools aren't going to reopen. He's right. When I first moved to Chinniac, that was a double Y. It was a modular, two ETCO units. And then the state, flushed with money, started building all these schools. And you notice that the Akiak and Chinniac and I think Karlik.
Karlik.
All have the same. As a matter of fact, when they built the Chinniac School, if you pull out the plans, it has Akiak crossed out on it, so, with a pen. So I think maybe what we have to do is, first of all, find out where we legally stand. Because if the schools are closed, then we have steps we're supposed to follow. I agree with Scott, if Karlik is still open to some extent for education, but then we have to look at what we're going to do there. Two students, you don't need that big school either. So that'll give us somewhere to start. In the meantime, we'll look at keeping the schools alive because letting them fall into the ground right now might be a mistake. Does that sound fair? I'm seeing enough heads shaking. So Roxanne?
That's how I was hoping to proceed, is exactly what you said. And I'll be happy to work with the attorney on that.
Okay, great. Then we are done with that for tonight, unless there's any other comments. And then we got to, you know, we don't have to talk about the manager's budget, we'll just pass it. Presentation of the manager's budget to the Assembly. So Roxanne, if you want to start?
Definitely. Well, I'm very excited to be here tonight to talk about the manager's budget. The first thing I want to do is really thank the finance department, especially Dora, and all of the work that she poured in to coming up with a budget that I think is very sound. I really appreciate that as far as the manager's budget is concerned, we haven't had to increase the mil rate, that it's getting so many department needs met, some slight staffing improvements, and then also just assuring that we have programs and services that will support the community. So I also wanted to thank the finance team and all of the staff that worked so hard to pull their department budgets together, trying to come up with budget delivery that will hopefully be appeasing to the Assembly. My humble request is that we can hopefully amend the manager's budget with any needs that you are interested in or any concerns that you have on it. And I just humbly ask that if there are major cuts or any even minor cuts to the budget, that staff would be afforded the opportunity to talk about the consequences of such cuts so we can all have a fair say because staff has conveyed that that's been a concern in the past. But we really look forward to receiving Assembly member input regarding the budget. And as for tonight, for the process that we'll go through, we really want to keep it simple. So what we'll do is we'll have the different department directors or staff members in place of the department directors that will give an overview of their budget. But I was asked that it mainly consists of what's really new, what staff requests for additional staff are there, or any major programs. So not necessarily going line by line through the department budget, but just anything that is significant for this year. So what I'll ask now is, I hope Dora is on the line. Was she able to make it on the line? Hi, Dora. What I'll ask Dora to do is offer any introductory remarks that she may have, and then ask her to go into her department budget discussion. And while we're queuing her up, I'll just say, after each department discussion and presentation, we'll offer an opportunity for the Assembly to ask any questions or offer any thoughts. And hopefully Dora's there.
I can hear you. Yes.
Well, in the interest of time, why don't we have Seema come up? And she will go over the community development department and also the assessing department, as she's helping in the interim to oversee both departments. And we'll go through her budget now.
Good evening. So I guess we'll start with assessing, if you don't mind, because it's an A.
Right.
On the assessing budget, our newest deal is to add one extra person. We have one person that is going to part-time and one that is able to retire. So in the grand scheme of things, I'm really only asking for a half a person. Because when that one retires and the one goes to just three days a week or part-time, then it's only an extra half a body. And that's my biggest ask for assessing. Are there any questions?
You are now answering a call from the queue.
It's 10:30 at night there.
Hi, Dora.
Hello.
She's there.
We'll skip over. Dora, I wasn't sure if you heard, but I wanted to give you the opportunity to offer any kind of introductory remarks regarding the manager's budget, and then also take on your department presentation, including anything substantial, new or staffing requests.
I was pleased that the manager's budget is at 10.75. I think the Assembly has posed that line at key, mil rate. And I'm hopeful that the... So that I was pleased to see. I don't think there's anything out of line with any of the other budgets. I know Dave and facilities, engineering facilities and buildings and grounds had some projects planned. And so I think their maintenance coordinator position will be key for getting those finished. As for finances budget, there's really nothing new in there. There is a slight increase to my payroll costs. We have the same steps and columns that the school district has. And I thankfully am fully staffed now, so I'm excited about that. And that's all I have for mine.
And Dora, I'm hoping you can please stay on the line in case there are some general questions that you could help with regarding any Assembly members' concerns about the budget, if that's okay. And we'll try to get through this fast because I know you're on the phone late where you are.
That's okay. I had planned on it, and I'm looking forward to it. I will say the other department I have is IT, and I believe Paul's there this evening to speak about the IT needs and that particular budget. Thank you.
Anybody have questions for Dora?
Okay, then we'll move on to Seema's other department.
Did anybody have any assessing?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Got a question. Seema, as I was reading this on the new position that you're asking for, then basically when one retires, it's a wash.
It's actually better than a wash because it's only a half a person extra. Because I also have someone in this budget that's going to part-time. So it's really replacing half of that one person and half of the other person, so.
Okay, because...
I'm still a half a person down, is what it would look like.
Right. That's the way I understand it, is it's a reduction of half a person, not a wash. It's, you know, the one position for the retirement, that washes. But then by the person going to part-time, it's actually a reduction in...
In staff.
In the staff.
Yep.
So I just wanted to make sure everybody, one, that I was looking at that correct, and two, that everybody else understood.
You got it.
Thank you.
Seema, that change in staffing is reflected in the personnel. Is that correct in terms of the salaries and that increase? Is that already accounted for?
It is. It is.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm looking at the assessing in the adopted 2022 was 790, and so it's about $100,000. And a chunk of that is in the position, and the other chunk would be putting back in school time and that?
That is. But, so we also accounted for that retired position to be here the whole year.
Right.
So that salary number will change. I just don't know when it will change.
Okay.
So if she retires before this budget, then that number will change automatically. But if she retires while we're in the budget, that number is still going to go down.
Okay. Any other questions? Jeff?
One additional question, then, on the, I think about the five pages or six pages in where we had kind of a breakdown on the departments and the staffing needs and those positions that were filled or vacant or part-time or full-time. It's looking at the budget for assessing being at seven FTE, up from six last year. But is it really not seven? It's six and a half, then, is what I'm hearing?
Five.
No, because you got a wash.
One.
That's why, and a loss of a half a position, almost.
Four. I'm four. It would be four and a half, right?
Five and a half.
Okay, so for part of the year, it's going to be five and a half.
Okay.
And for the... Four, five. So part of the year is going to be five and a half, and part of the year is going to be six and a half. When the retiree retires, it'll drop back down to five and a half.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
If they retire.
When?
Yeah.
I'm not that lucky. But I can tell her you said that.
Any other questions for Seema? And we will move on to community development.
Oh, you know what?
Hmm?
I see where you're getting that number from. You're exactly right. We did not put in, because we didn't know what the part-time rate was going to be. So Jeannie, or the part-timer, her rate will go down also. So I'll be saving money on that one person that retires and the one person that goes part-time because we didn't know how that was going to configure out, so we put her in as full-time. You are smart.
Within the salaries, that's reflected there.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. But no other questions? So you want to do community development?
Do. So, community development, we added the salary for the director. I'm sad to say that we will also be looking for a planner because Frank resigned, and so his last day will be May 18. So we'll have two positions open there. So it's going to put a little kaffeele in it, but... So those numbers for salaries could change depending on when people are hired. Of course, that would mean it would go down unless somebody came in.
Reduction. Can't you convince him not to resign until after we do the pay study?
You know, it's funny because May 18 is his last day, and I was like, well, that's a heck of a birthday present. So, you know, he either... So, you know, he either loves Kodiak or you don't, so...
That's true. Any questions on Community Development, or the first brush here? Scott?
I guess, you know, I'm looking at, Community Development has a GIS analyst. And when I look at Information Technology, there's a programmer analyst. And I know in the past, we've had issues with the GIS person being able to have access to the programming, which is, and there's been that issue, that they haven't been able to do their job. My question is, do you move, do you move the GIS analyst back to IT?
That's a good question. I think that will be a decision the manager will make when she looks at it. It was moved out in the first place because the GIS person was doing the bidding of other people, other than the people that needed it the most, which was Community Development and Assessing. And it's possible they could move back now and we'd be able to straighten the hash out with a strong manager. Because you want the GIS person to be able, for instance, the Community Development, the official zoning ordinance is the map. That map is the official. And if you can't get them to update the villages because they're too busy doing other stuff for people that are not necessarily borough business, then you end up with a problem because you've got a zoning map that is not up to date. And the zoning map is basically the weight of an ordinance, the way it was explained to me by, I think Bob Peterson was the Community Development Director at the time. So you just need to have a strong hand in there. And it does make good sense. One reason it makes good sense is that you also could have a backup within the IT department. Somebody has enough to keep it going. If somebody leaves and you have a hiatus before you hire somebody new, you'd have a backup. And that was something that was pointed out to me years ago. But at that time, I felt there was more need to separate it than to keep it together, but that may not exist anymore. So that's a good point. That would be Roxanne's call.
I also just wanted to make the Assembly aware that Seema and I have absolutely talked about this, and I wanted to give Seema the opportunity to provide some testimony about it.
So in light of Frank's resignation, you know, we've been kind of tossing around a restructure of that department totally. If you did take the GIS analyst out, it's not going to get rid of a position. Will it get rid of a higher dollar amount because of the analyst position? Yeah, I believe so. But I do think, because of exactly what you said, we still need public notice maps timely, we still need Platts changed timely, we need addresses done timely, that we, in Community Development, we would need to hire a mapper. It wouldn't be as expensive as that position, but it would still be a position that would be required there. And that would work really well for not only Community Development, because Assessing could then also make sure that things are lined out by deed and we could get a little bit more done working together with an analyst in GIS. I certainly do not want to have to spice works every time I need a public, a public hearing map. And I don't think that, you know, necessarily IT would want that either. But if we could replace that position, and along with that restructure, we would also maybe move down, and this is all just thinking at this point, but change in the Secretary Three to a Secretary One, and then making, we're in contact with other boroughs to just see if there is a permit person. And we could, you know, restructure and make it so that... Planners don't stay. If we look at it in the last five years, we have had, or excuse me, since 2019, we have had five planners, and they don't stay. If you look at any other borough, they're always hiring planners, too. And it's not that it's just Kodiak, but their mindset is to move on to something else and find that, I don't know, find what is right for them, or, you know, be in something different and, you know, do something different. So we want to be able to say, okay, restructuring that planner's position, maybe we should give them more planning things to do instead of just permits. And that we can have another position that when the planner does leave, it doesn't leave Community Development high and dry like it did last time, and James having to do three people's jobs. So we would actually spread out the permit system, you know, by having somebody that was solely looking at permits. And the planner position would only do the permits that had to go to the P&amp;Z Commission, but then they could work on Hazard Misigation and the CIP and different things that would satisfy them as a planner, instead of only looking at it from a plan, from a permit point of view. I hope that makes sense.
Seema, you used a term earlier, what did you call it?
Let me try to clarify. So we have an IT ticket system, and that's called SPICE.
SPICE, that's a term.
That's, and I wanted to clarify that, because I'm like, I don't think anybody knows what SPICE is. So what she's explained... That's the complication, is that if this went to IT and it was only through IT, then we would have to provide IT tickets, and that would go amongst all the priorities that IT is working on when they may need a map really quickly. I hope that's a simpler way of stating it.
SPICE probably means something than, I don't know, it's probably an acronym for something. You'll have to ask Paul, so, but...
I just wanted to clarify that, because that was a new term that I wasn't familiar with. And so what you're telling me is that has slowed things down in the past, where if the person is in IT, potentially for the GIS like it used to be, there's a much quicker response there, because, just because...
It takes, it goes to the priorities, and the priorities are...
Right, it was faster, that's the problem.
Are decided, you know, IT has their own priorities.
But I remember in the past, it was faster, when it was in IT.
It might have been.
I can vouch for that.
We could ask Paul. He was actually, he was actually the person who started GIS in his community, and he learned GIS by the seat of his pants, I believe. And he did a really credible job of it. So you could ask him, and he could probably fill you in a lot more history.
But I could also say that that's when conditions are very good, it would be very fast. But crazy things happen with technology and shutdowns and things like that, so... But I will let Paul talk to it when he gets up here.
Well, and people go on vacation, and, you know, they're out sick, and there's different things. Those public hearing maps are used by Clerk's Office, too. So it's important that, you know, we keep that, that kind of, it just doesn't have to be the analyst part. It can just be a, and I'm saying just a mapper, but it's important, but make it a mapper instead of an analyst position. Does it make my budget look better? Oh, yeah. And I'm all about that, right? Because then I get big smiles from you.
Anything more? Nope. Anything more from the Assembly? Okay, moving on.
Thank you.
So now I'd like to move on to IT as an extension of what Dora talked about, and then maybe we can get some clarity on how fast did it go?
Hello. Thank you for, thank you for diving into the budget. And so if you look at the IT budget, there is an increase from last year. Looks like we're about $105,000, $105,000. With my napkin-mouth hair. You'll see in the page, pages above, that we are looking for a, for an IT analyst position in the, in the IT department. Currently, we have three people, but kind of as Seema was alluding to, we, functionally, we have two and a half people in the IT department. I believe that the half person is budgeted full-time. And they do work more than 20 hours a week. They work between 20 and 40 hours a week, depending on the season. So very grateful that the Clerk's Office gave up their Assistant Clerk to the IT department. And he is a quick learner, and I have nothing but positive things to say about Mitchell Davidson. So I'll say it by name, Mitchell Davidson. Anyway, Mitchell's, Mitchell's really learning a lot. He came in with the base qualifications of a PC Tech One. Education that he got in high school, in fact, qualified him for the position. So workforce development, 10 years later. But, but we have been set back through COVID and other delays, particularly by myself, working at the EOC for the last couple of years. And, and so we do have a lot of IT projects and a lot of IT initiatives, which is a good thing. And Mitchell is able to come up to speed with those things at the ground floor. But, but we do need a, a person that is essentially between myself and Mitchell, educationally and experience-wise. So he's a quick learner, but we need, we need somebody with a little bit more industry experience. We did have a problem trying to fill that position before we closed that IT analyst position, and then we opened the IT PC Tech position. A lot of the feedback we were getting was the salary wasn't enough. And what we were asking for, for qualifications, were basically a starting wage of $80,000 in the industry across the state, and we were offering $60,000. So we had a few people apply for it and say, it'd be great, but I need to make north of 100. And, you know, we just said, that's not, that's not in the salary scale. So we're hoping that maybe if we put this back out, we can get some, and I believe, Roxanne, you've been given direction. I don't know, I haven't listened to all the meetings, but there's a salary study somewhere in here. So, you know, so we're hoping maybe that will help out for filling that position. Other than that, we do have, like I said, a lot of projects have been set aside over the last couple of years through COVID. And we do have our camera replacement project that we're actively working on, and having staffing to do that in the next couple of years is important.
Scott?
Thank you. Paul, I noticed under Machinery and Equipment, for the coming year, 70,000. For the current year, zero. And expended the previous year, 2020, was 14,000. What's the 70,000?
So that's, that's under capital outlay. So we have two things listed in there. We have cloud services in there, and that is, I put this under capital outlay because maybe it should have gone into professional services or contracted services, but, you know, we're looking at some amount to start migrating into cloud services. And then the other part of that is a security camera system for the borough that we've been asked to put on our budget. And those two things were stricken from last year's budget as well. So that's why you have zero there.
How much is the security cameras?
We're looking at, we're looking at up to 50,000 for that. There's still, we've been asked, but we haven't scoped it out.
Yeah. Personally speaking, I'm not that interested in that. The cloud services, you're saying is only 20,000?
That's what we're budgeted for.
And is that, how does that work as far as from an equipment standpoint? Or is that actually a contracted service?
It's more of a contracted service, but because we don't have a contract yet, and we're not sure exactly which service we're going to go with, because it's over $5,000, and this is, I'm not, I'm not an accountant, but everything over 5,000, as I've been told, is capital. So I just went ahead and put that in the capital line item. I believe, you don't have the, the full breakout, but I believe if this was going to be in capital, I believe it would be under, like, capital software, so...
Well, that's why I'm asking what the 70,000 is, and I appreciate the breakdown on it, so thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? James?
So I see continuing education on here. If I can follow the line on them, 6,000. In the past, you've had Travelon per diem. Is that for the continuing education? Or is that, because this year you don't have anything in Travelon per diem, is that because we've nixed it over the last two years?
Yes. That's why, we have nothing, because you guys nixed it.
So you're doing all online courses?
We have.
And still plan to do that?
Honestly, I don't have that section in front of me. I'm not sure what's, if you have anything...
You have zero.
Okay. So yes. Yes, my boss says we're doing online classes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have 6,000, continuing.
No, we were talking about Travelon per diem. 6,000 in continuing education and zero in Travelon per diem.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jeff?
Yeah, I don't think this is specific to IT necessarily, but it is a general question based on Assessing and Community Development. The, the group insurance, I see fluctuating both directions on it. And what I'm wondering is, is that our health insurance? Is that, what all is covered, covered under the group insurance? And do we have an estimate on what those rates are looking like for next year? Is that where the fluctuation's coming? Or is it because we're seeing changes in staffing numbers?
Dora, is that something you could help with clarifying, pretty please?
Insurance information is primarily our healthcare and some of our life insurance. It's a all or nothing, so for the premium employee are the same if they work full-time or part-time. And so some of the fluctuation you're seeing is because if there's a part-time employee or if they're separated into different departments, you could have five bodies in that department as a home department, but if they're spread out, then that cost is spread out. And it's a little odd, because it's a whole-dollar cost, it's not a percentage. And our insurance costs, I projected in the budget for a 4% increase, and we were notified that it was a 2.2% increase. So I thought that was pretty good.
That answer your question, Jeff?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Paul.
Okay, next up, what I'll do is ask Matt to please come forward, and we will discuss the Engineering and Facilities Department, and then also any questions that the Assembly might have. And Matt's filling in for Dave Conrad, as Dave is on personal leave.
Thank you. I'm going to do my best to not butcher Dave's budget. But the, the highlights of the, I think, changes from, from last year to this year in the proposed EF budget are obviously the maintenance coordinator position, which Dora referred to earlier. That is in this budget. It's spread among, I think, five different areas. General EF, Borough Building, KFRC, Landfill, and Leachate Treatment Plant. So it's kind of distributed throughout. Other big changes are, he has in here a new pickup truck with a plow and a lift gate for the maintenance mechanic, because the green one out here is starting to, it's on its last legs. And then just generally throughout the budget is increased utility costs and increased maintenance costs, as some of our equipment ages and gets a little older, requires a little more work. And sort of as Dora also mentioned earlier, there's some large transfers for capital projects, such as the boilers for this building, work at KFRC, stuff like that. Those are the, the big differences between last year and this year, but I'm happy to try to answer any questions or take notes and get back to you with answers.
Questions? Scott?
Yeah, I talked with Dave before he left, and I told him I had a serious problem when it says Maintenance Director. And he goes, that's a mistake. That's a mistake. It's a supervisor, not a director.
Right.
So that needs to be clarified on there. So thank you.
James?
Let me see if I can word this correctly. The funds that we got, if my memory serves me, it's from the state for, for, I think it's ARPA funds, it may be lost revenue, the lost revenue portion of those funds. revenue, the, the lost revenue portion of those funds. Um, the reason, the reason why I'm bringing this up is in past discussions with, with Dave, um, he and I were going to push for taking some of those funds and buying new vehicles for the borough instead of taking them out of general fund. The, the purpose of this is so that we don't put anything in the budget necessarily or unnecessarily when almost all of the vehicles for the borough need to be replaced since 90% of them are 20 years old and basically falling apart as some people in the borough can attest to, um, es- especially our, our management. So my, my question is, is when is, because we're in the budget phase, are we just going to lump those into our budget or those funds into our budget? Or are we going to have a different discussion on those? Because we have a piece of equipment in there that could be taken out of this budget if we're going to use those funds. And I'm glad that you brought up that that's what that expense is for. And so I don't want to cause confusion, but I also want to clarify that those funds can be used to purchase those vehicles so that we don't have to go into our general fund. We can use those general fund monies for something else. Like when I look through the entire budget, almost every department has nixed their travel and per diem because we've done that for the last couple of years, and we need to start implementing that back into our budget. And so that could be something that we start looking at this year instead of purchasing a new vehicle, um, with general fund. The, I, I guess I'll leave it at that. But that's kind of where we were looking to go a ways back when we first started talking about those funds coming in. And now that we've got those funds, or at least we have been promised those funds, I want to know when we're going to start discussing that so we can take that particular line item out of it and get those vehicles started on purchase before it's too late for all of the vehicles.
So Dora, I hope you can help me with responding to this, but I'm definitely committed to using that funding so we don't have to spend our governmental money. And I hear you loud and clear on that. Um, I thought what I heard Dave say is that we would be buying a borough vehicle this year and then he'd submit for one next year. But if we cannot have that in our budget because we can use other revenue sources, I definitely want to explore that. Dora, is there anything you'd like to add about any understanding you have about this?
Um, I don't have anything in particular about the ARPA funds. I don't know that the assembly was discussed that, or at least made any decisions. But I do know in the general administration budget that Dave and I did put $80,000 in there for two automobiles for, um, for the borough. So along with, I think, the one that Matt mentioned. And just on, as a side note, for travel and per diem and continuing education, if the travel and per diem has to do with continuing education, then all of that is expensed through the continuing education line. If there's travel and per diem in a budget, it's for things like when assessing is working and having to travel to assess something, not as an education feature.
Because we also did outreach after an agenda setting, um, meeting to the departments to see if there was any additional travel and training that would be required because we understood that there may be assembly understanding that we'd like to reinstitute that. So Dora did the outreach to the department directors, and there weren't submit, submitted changes. So what you see is what the staff, I guess, wanted at that time.
Let's, let's go back to-
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, Dora.
Let's go back to the vehicles. Um, that makes great sense to use that one-time ARCO funding on that, because it, it'd be a one-time expense on the budget and it would go down next year anyway. So, um, we need to have a discussion to give a direction that way. I know Dave was just, wasn't he just had two-day meeting on that ARCO? So when he comes back, we'll make sure that there's no hitching the giddy up to do that. And I think this assembly ought to have a real strong discussion about, "Let's just do that."
And Matt was there too. Matt was there.
Oh, that's right. Matt, you were there. I forgot.
I was going to ask Matt to give an update about anything that he learned during this symposium, just as FYI to the assembly after his presentation here.
Why don't you update us on that? Can we use that money?
Uh, well, the, that wasn't really focused on ARPA money. Um, that was more about the recent infrastructure bill, and the money's going to be coming in the next, you know, five years or so. Um, I'm, I'm happy to go into a little more detail if now is the appropriate time.
Assembly, you want to hear the update from that?
I'm interested.
Sorry to open a can of worms.
No, you're not.
So, yes, Dave and I were in Anchorage Monday and Tuesday. Um, Senator Mikowski hosted a symposium, uh, and there was probably a thousand or so people there. There's a lot more people than they expected. Um, it was a good turnout. Um, the first day was focused on, uh, federal and state agencies, uh, representatives. Basically, there was a lot of million-dollar amounts being thrown around. Um, they were all talking about how much money their, their agencies are going to have available. Um, and it was frankly a little overwhelming, um, because it sounds like there's a lot of money going to be available, um, in the state. Um, so that was the first day, um, and it was basically just presentations, like I said, going, they detail their programs. There's, uh, definitely some programs that, you know, Kodiak could benefit from. Um, the second day was hosted by AML, uh, and focused more specifically on kind of how you get that money. Um, and Dave and I spent most of our time, uh, on the grant writing track. They had three different tracks. One was workforce development. One was sort of focusing on grant writing. Um, and the other was kind of, uh, I'm not sure how to describe it, but kind of like different types of projects and, and challenges that they're faced in Alaska, stuff like that. Um, but we kind of focus on the grant writing one because that's the one we're least familiar with. Um, and I thought that was really interesting. I've never really done grant writing. I've never really learned much about it, but I learned a lot of good tips on how to write a good grant. And I think the biggest thing I took away was how much time it takes to write a good grant application, which was also a little intimidating. Um, but I think my overall impression was that, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be interesting what happens in the next five years. Um, and I think there's going to be a lot of opportunities. And I think we just need to kind of figure out how we're going to maximize those opportunities. Uh, and I think, I think Dave and I sort of both agree, our first step is really, you know, yes, we have a CIP list, but we should have a list of sort of more, not smaller necessarily, but kind of more realistic projects that we could do kind of now and, and get some money for and get those done. Uh, so I think, you know, um, it was really interesting, and I appreciated the opportunity to go. Um, but it was also kind of, like I said, a little intimidating as well.
Thank you, Matt. So, um, Roxanne, we'll put that on the agenda for the vehicle replacement?
Sure.
So, uh, next work session, assembly can hash it out and decide how to make it work?
That would be a, is, an exciting discussion for us to have, absolutely, because I know there's major concern about the vehicles.
James?
I, uh, sent the list that, uh, Dave sent me for the vehicles and the years of each one of them. So I think that Lena is going to print those out for the assembly for tonight. But, uh, if not, she'll send them out via email so everybody can see them. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Anybody have any other questions here? Jared?
Yeah, this one might be more for, um, Roxanne and Dora, and this is probably just me pleading ignorance. So I see that, um, going back to salaries and positions, um, there's a request for engineering and facilities for seven, uh, positions. This is six full-time and permanent and one seasonal temporary position. Um, but the, the salary line item is only, uh, just a shade over $200,000. Is that, are, are employees in engineering and facilities really being paid that low? Um, how, how is that, how's that breaking? I find that number remarkably small for the number of people in the department.
Spread out.
Well, I mean, it's an average of $30,000 per employee, and that, uh, how, how does that work? Just, yeah, it's helping how the-
I think Dora can, do you want to go, Dora?
As Matt mentioned, the coordinator position that they have in the budget is spread amongst five different funds. And their, the maintenance, or the, um, temporary person is also spread amongst different funds. What that list is is of home departments. Engineering facilities is about the only one who, who has people listed as a home department because our payroll requires that we have everyone as a home department. That's their default department. But like Matt, salary is spread amongst projects and other funds as well as the general funds.
So for example, Jenna's salary, she's in the EF department, but her salary is paid for by the landfill, you know, the LTP. Um, we split it up amongst different sub-departments, for lack of a better word, within EF, if that makes sense. So if you flip through further down, like if you look under landfill or wherever that is, um, 731, 701, there's a salaries line there, you know, for the guys who work at the landfill, but also a part of her salary and, you know, things like that.
Okay.
Sure.
Any other questions for Matt? Scott?
Just a little more clarification for you, Jared, is the director, so Dave Conrad's salary gets split off, um, part to the hospital.
Oh, okay.
Part to the fisheries research, part to the landfill. Part of the manager's salary goes to the different things also. So, so it's not an accurate indication of what the labor costs are.
Yeah.
Because you got to get into the enterprise funds and stuff like that.
Okay, with that, let's take a five-minute break and get back here at 10 o'clock.
Hey, if you want to know anything about what you do with 850,000 barrels of oil she spilled in Valdez Farm, just ask anybody. Not only that, I've got a plan I can give you that. Good God, that was funny. It was fun because you always learn something. There's only one 1992 vehicle here, blue Ford.
That's a classic.
That's a classic.
I want that. Put that up for public auction.
We might get, we might get some good at auction.
Heck, yeah.
Oh, my gosh. 1992 blue Ford.
Man, I want it. Auction that bad boy off. Fundraiser right there.
That's a murder, man.
It's been used for the, uh, the cleanup.
Oh, it's a van that they-
And you can see it.
Okay, yeah, all right.
For 30 years.
Yeah, why are we getting rid of it? It's just, it's just broken in at 57,000 miles? You got another, you got another 30 years out of that one.
No. It needs to be. But you don't necessarily need a new one.
Yeah.
A used one fits into it.
I'm all right.
There's, there's some moving parts on this budget at the moment, so.
Right. Don't briefly touch on that, so that you're on alert.
I just want to make sure that dollar-wise that we're on, on par with where we need to be, right? So that in, in the winter, we don't end up with a pit going, uh, how we cover that. So, no, that's, no, that, I appreciate clarity.
A little bit more, a little bit more time.
Well, what I was really bummed about, you know, is I'm going out of town next week.
Well, rank choice loading.
Oh, now I know what that is.
Can we move it to May 2nd? It's the first time. Their committee's going to meet, and I need to go.
We have a quorum for a week.
So then when I saw the email today, I'm like, never mind.
Unfortunately, they are, their biologists say that it has to be the fourth Tuesday of their year.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that means I'm good for a month at least.
I mean, I was ecstatic last week about, hey, that quorum, and then I literally helped Ron mention that last week. It was a Thursday.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
One of these days, she's so excited.
Thanks, Scott.
You're welcome. I just probably have a name. From like Maine or something, does he got that?
Well, it's always, it's always neat when you take one name and it echoes. You got three of us.
How long has it been since we've had a term brand specialist?
Part of the, Jared, part of the problem, part of the problem is Noah doesn't want to pay.
Oh, no, I mean, that sounds like it's been a while, though. It's been like-
Two years. Noah is asking about opening it up. And Dave is asking, what do you want?
So, yes, there's that. It's like, no, guys.
It would be cool.
You were aware I got the nice, uh, you know, from the bus.
A nice one or a bad one? They are.
Roxanne, look at how pretty I made my budget.
I haven't got one.
There's Nova left us little, Nova left us little sticky notes, so I've been able to-
Fire, fire chiefs, you might find them in San Francisco.
And I noticed, and I appreciate it.
You should contact base or something. I ruled out little, and they did. And it took a while, but then driving some of these came out. And of course, they researched.
Oh, my, we were the next.
Well, fire chiefs.
You missed that discussion. It's only got 57,000 miles. How many could fit for another 30 years?
Well, forestry service too, DEC.
It's only 2,000 miles a year that things get to.
I'm going to provide a little ref-.
I'm happy I copied you.
Did they come to you originally?
I just copied you.
I live in the flat.
Okay, we're all back. Let's call this meeting back to order. We're in talking about the budget. We just finished with engineering and facilities. We haven't heard from the, the manager yet, so I suppose it's your turn.
I was giving the best for last. Or maybe hoping there'd be a little exhaustion because this was my first time doing the borough manager's budget here, and I really got some great help from Dora. So she may be responding to some of the questions, if you have any from that. But what I'd love to do first is, uh, talk about the clerk's office budget because we have a little bit of an unfortunate circumstance in the fact that the prior clerk is who created the budget that's in your packet. And so that's a, quite a disservice to our interim clerk. And we want to obviously give more, some more time for our interim clerk to get things in there that she would like to see. But we have her available if she can answer any questions and if there's anything that she wants to go over.
Nobody, you have anything you want to say, uh, other than the fact you want more time, which is granted?
I think I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the-
I think I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the legislative budget. From what I can glean on here is that the increases are pretty much, the assembly travel and per diem budget was increased. And then the mayor's budget was, you know, zeroed out the past few years. And now there's a little bit of a budget that was put into these years, this fiscal year's budget. And then also what I noticed is that there are, there's some training money added into the budget and also additional meeting expenses. That's pretty much what's in the legislative budget.
And you feel comfortable with that?
I am.
Okay. Any questions from the assembly? Amy?
I would feel more comfortable with changes to these budgets if I knew that Nova was going to stay longer than interim. So just want to put that out there that that would be. I mean, I think the public would feel more comfortable knowing that a budget was reflecting a clerk that had intentions of staying longer. So just planting the seed. Thank you.
Well, I'm listening.
No, no pressure, Nova.
Right.
Lock the doors, quick.
So, and then for the clerk's budget, pretty much what, from what I can glean on is that there's going to be a part-time person. There's a part-time person that's being proposed. And I see that maybe that's because we have like four elections coming up. And it's going to be an unusual year for us. There's a lot going on. There's new equipment that we're going to be using this year. So there's a lot to learn. And aside from that, aside from new equipment, because the state is not going to lend us their equipment. They, they gave notice in December that they're not going to lend us their equipment because of security reasons. And all the clerks, all the municipalities in Alaska are purchasing their equipment for, for local elections. One other thing that I would like to point, point out is that we're now subject to the section 203 of the Voting Act. So that means that we're going to have to translate all our documents into the Filipino language. This is not new. We've done this 10 years ago. So fortunately, thank you, Paul, he was able to retrieve all our templates from back then. So that's going to save us some money. And I'm able, I speak the language. So I can tweak the documents without us going to a certified translator for the, because I have to translate all of our documents, like election materials, into the Filipino language. So those are the expenses that I can see on the clerk's budget. There's also a contracted service that is being proposed for parliamentary training. And I can do that in-house as well. I've done training for various boards and commissions in the community. I've also been a presenter at the Alaska Association of Municipal Clerk. I've done parliamentary training before. Maybe if we need to, what we probably should bring in is someone that could do boardmanship training. But the parliamentary training I can do in-house. Advertising budget was increased substantially, but I'm going to need more information regarding that on what you want to see when it comes to advertising your meetings. So I'm going to need some input on that because I do not know what this increase entails.
I think it was because advertising costs were going up, but Dora could clarify if she has any other understanding.
But so as far as I know, that's all that's in this proposed budget. We may need, I may need some time regarding the compensation for the department. I need to take a look at that.
James?
Sorry, I don't see the purchase of those. It's on. You can't hear me? Just kidding. The purchase of those, of the machinery for the elections, I don't see that in the budget. Is that somewhere else in the budget?
They're in 100, 110, 450, 470. Election local.
The 45,000.
The 45,000 right there.
Thank you.
Maybe the assembly can help me, but I'm seeming to remember the assembly at one point talking about hiring a part-time to help with records. Does anybody else here got? I think that that was maybe assembly prior to this one, that's the sitting right now. But because so much time was spent on records and we were so far behind, I think that's probably what part of that part-time was, was for records, somebody helped with records.
Okay.
Any other questions for Nova? We will give you till tomorrow at 8 o'clock. Yeah, you, you've got to look into that and see what you think and then bring us back any changes. Back at you, Roxanne.
Great. So I will just go over my budget, which will be quite swift, I hope. Because the most substantial changes are that we put money in to hopefully find a contract human resources organization that we can work with. And that human resources organization could really assist with revising our personnel regulations and making sure that we're, you know, obeying the letter of the law regarding any changes within human, human resources. Also, within this budget, there is funding for a compensation study and a salary study, which we've alluded to tonight. And I really hope that that's going to help with some of the issues that the departments have been facing with recruiting and retention and the like. But other than that, the borough manager's budget is really status quo from last year. And I just fundamentally took the numbers from last year, worked with Dora to see if there was anything else that I needed to consider and then use those numbers for this year. But I'd be happy to try to answer any questions with some assistance from Dora if necessary.
Questions? James?
Land Resources Manager. We still don't have anybody in there. Are you still planning on doing that on your own? Or are we divvying that up amongst others in the?
For now, I'm managing it. I may work with some kind of contract service, if anything, but I don't think we'd want to hire for that position, if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you for that answer. And so that leads me to my question. In the first year or two of my assembly discussions, we had talked about a number of different lands that we were going to put for sale. And I still haven't seen that happen. So I don't know how that's, I believe it stalled when the land resources person was, that position was vacated. But that is extra money to the, to the borough. And I think that we should start moving forward on that again. And I don't want to make the budget and not be able to do that if we can this year. So.
I absolutely hear you. And I like the idea of surplus property planning that you can do annually. So then people know the general time of year that you announce what lands are going to be open for sale based on what the assembly likes to prioritize. And we can do some inventorying, but it would be nice to get some contract help with that so we can do that. But I definitely want to proceed with that because that could help with funding and help with the community needs, especially regarding hopefully housing.
Thank you.
Yeah, the other thing I think from my past experience is we need to catalog all our leases. Some of them are outdated. Some of them don't make any sense. And we need to have them reviewed and maybe updated and make sure that the people we are leasing to know their responsibilities. I know that we had, for instance, KISA went and replaced a culvert that was not legal. And we have to replace it now. Fortunately, we got grant money for doing that, thanks to engineering, to Dave and Matt. But those kind of problems are going to continue to arise if we don't at least get a handle on what leases we have and have somebody catalog them for us and maybe give us some insight into what we should do with them. And for that, I think we could use contract services much better. It's a lot cheaper in the, in the long run. Any other comments? Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your last comment kind of ties in with my comment. I've heard up till you talked about lease management and contracted services. I've, I've heard that the contracted services is trying to cover HR land resources in the salary study. And I just, I don't see $80,000 getting you very far down the road on that one. And so I, I think that's low and I think that's just something that we ought to be considering. I, I could see $80,000 getting tied up in HR real quick.
$80,000 was for HR. Dora, can you help me understand where we put the compensation study? If she's still there.
If she's, if she's not, I, I think it's just something to be aware of, like if.
You are now answering a call from the queue.
Hi, Dora, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
So we were just hoping to get clarity on where the compensation study funding landed in the borough manager's budget.
Um, I think you had requested that I put 75 in there. I think that's what was in there. Or one second, scrolling.
I can't recall where we put it. I know we did that, but I did that right when the assembly wanted it. So I can't exactly recall where it went.
Yeah, I'm, I'm scrolling. Sorry.
But I worked with an HR firm out of Anchorage to figure out the $80,000 approximation for what it would cost for an annual HR contract to help us with that.
Jeff?
And it is in professional services, contracted services in the borough management budget.
So that total 80,000 includes both? The HR and the?
No, HR, Dora, the 80,000 was for the HR side. Maybe that was something that we didn't get to then.
There is, there is 98,000 in professional services for general administration. And then there's also the 80,000 in the managers. Maybe it's, maybe it's part of one of those.
Jeff?
Yeah, I guess my only, my only point is I think that that's an area that we need to look at and may need to readjust and reconsider. If we're looking at trying to look at contracted services for, you know, land resources, whether it's lease management, whether it's the salary study, if they're not included within that area, I think that's just something to, to be aware of. Because I just didn't see 80,000 covering all of those items.
Yeah, 80,000 is just for HR. We tucked the pay study in somewhere in those numbers. And then we'll have to figure out contract service costs for the leasing and include that.
And the 98,000 that James had mentioned, that's our audit contract services.
For the audit?
In general admin.
Any other questions at this point? Take it away, Roxanne.
Actually, Dora, is there any, are there any final thoughts that you have? I want to make sure I address any needs you have.
On?
Just anything with the budget. If not, we can conclude.
No, just that the general administration, which I don't think we, we touched on yet, does include the audit fees and the vehicle that, or two vehicles that David put in there. Other than that, there weren't any specific odd changes to the general administration.
Are there any final questions? Sure.
Scott?
Yeah. I would really like the tabs that we got last year to make it much easier. No, I'm talking about the ones that came with the budget. And yeah, rather than doing the stickies all over the place like Amy's got, hers is very effective. But the tabs with the numbers on them and everything is just easier, I think, for everyone on there. So I'd like to request those for the next version.
I'll work with Dora and we'll get you tabs for that, absolutely.
Just drop your budget with Amy. She'll take care of it. That's cheap. So Roxanne, does that conclude the budget for tonight? Bill? James?
So I might be jumping ahead, but economic development going from 20,000 down to 600 for books and periodicals, but no contracted services, is there a specific reason for that? Was it just to meet the 10.75 or what? I'm sorry. It would be 21 of 31.
Dora, I may need your help with this or any department help from this because I'm not sure about that line item.
That traditionally is shared between Dave and FEMA and that $600 is the Chamber of Commerce membership dues.
Bill? Go ahead, Scott.
I'd like to see the 20,000 put in for the 2023. What that has been used for in the past was part of the salmon work group at different times. But it gave the, it gave the assembly going forward. It wasn't committed to any particular thing, but it gave them some flexibility in dealing with things as they come up.
Amy?
I'd like to echo Scott's money back in, but I'd like to do it for a different purpose. I think the, there, we do have a new, and I'm not on the, I'm not being paid by them anymore, so I can say this out loud. The Kodiak Economic Development Corporation is up and running and successful and has a very powerful board of directors. And I know that the borough is not going to jump back in economic development with their olden days $45,000 development. But baby steps would be using the money that's in our fiscal year '22 budget to go towards that organization and then putting this aside. And if we don't use it, being able to do that again towards the end of the next fiscal year and just get our, our toes wet in economic development world again. They do have a project manager that they just hired this week, so there is a actual full-time employee. So I think that putting that money into actual economic development, as the fund suggests, would be a good place.
So there.
Doesn't commit it either way, is the way I look at it. It gives the assembly the flexibility. Because salmon, salmon work group was economic development for Kodiak. So one must remember that too.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. This new organization is also dealing with issues like that and the emerging mariculture industry, which I think is going to be important in the future of Kodiak's economy diversification. So I just, I'm planting seeds, right? And so that's what we do with these meetings on where that money could go. I think that we could maybe ask them to come in and give a presentation and you could find out what they're doing and what their project list looks like. And it's actually very impressive at this point. And not to be outdone by the city, the city is funding them every year too. So just a, a thought on how we could spend that money.
Stop me if I go too far, but page 25 of 31, emergency preparedness. We have 15,000 budgeted last year, but it wasn't, previous, it was 2018 that we had anything really budgeted in that for professional services, contracted services. Part of the reason that we put it in there last year was to buy some supplies, I believe, for earthquake preparedness or tsunami preparedness. But I don't know why we have it in there this year. So if, if I'm jumping ahead before the next meeting, I can wait until next meeting, otherwise.
You're not jumping ahead. It's open.
Okay.
Open season on the manager.
Okay.
So I honestly had no idea this was a community development budget and so I just left it exactly the same. I know that we are trying to look at some hazard mitigation stuff. And we have just started pulling that out. We're looking at possibly applying. started pulling that out, we're looking at possibly applying for a grant to do some studies and stuff like that, so.
FEMA, I'll ask you to come up with the, we'll work on a more realistic number. Would that appease you?
No, I, I, that, that number's fine, I'm okay with it, I just wanted to ask.
What it is, yeah.
Because I knew last year it was for supplies, this year I don't know what it's for, so I just wanted a little clarification. Was it more supplies, or is it just in case?
We'll clarify. Thank you.
Yeah, what she said.
Scott?
Yeah, one of the potentially, one of the areas that we, we have problems with is drainage, and this is potentially something that can be used to get money as far as applying for the infrastr, on the infrastructure side of the federal money that's coming down to the state and then applying for it. So we have, we have lots of issues, there's no problem with spending it, and even though we're not sure exactly what it's for, as you can see, we haven't spent the 15,000 in the current fiscal year, which is budgeted, and so, but it's just a good placeholder there, because I know we've got a lot of issues that we haven't been able to get to, and maybe we will be able to. Thank you.
James, you good with that? Okay?
Can I impart one thought there? The 15,000 also was some maintenance planned on the tsunami sirens that were installed? If we could partner with, I think it was the city as well, to bring someone up to do some warranty work, so some of that cost was, if there was something that needed to happen on those sirens?
Back at you, James, you got more?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that Scott said that it's easy to spend the money. I don't think it's very easy to spend the money. I hate spending the money.
Thank you, James. Anything else on this budget before you want to bring up and ask questions for the manager?
We'll also have future time on your agendas, so we can, you know, you can stew on this and think about anything that we discussed tonight and come up with any other changes or suggestions. This isn't going to be your only chance at it.
The, the budget's going to be on every work session from here on out, in one way, shape, or form or other. James?
So I do have one question, and we are looking at salary ranges, and that's going to come up quickly, I hope, before the end of this budget cycle, maybe? Maybe? No? Okay. Okay.
Do we have any money to do it between now and June 30th?
Dora, is there a way we could appropriate for that, to get that done faster?
Yes, there's a budget amendment, but there was also, I believe, 20,000 in this year's budget toward a salary study that hasn't been tapped yet.
And then also, we are already in the process of taking the old RFP and updating it, so it'll just include compensation, so that would be ready quickly, so we can act on that quickly if that's what the Assembly would like.
I think that's what James is hitting at, because we're setting a budget for a whole year, and if we do a salary study and find out, well, the reason we can't keep anybody, we've got to give them more money, we ought to know it now.
Okay.
Yes, that's, that is part of it. I would like to be able to adjust these salaries if we decide to before we decide on the budget. That way we have it in this year, instead of getting a salary assessment and then waiting an entire year to, to put it back into a budget, that would just, that'd be like, here, this is what we might pay you next year. Right? So that's kind of hard to swallow.
I agree.
Especially when, I mean, if we're, if we're that far off, there's a potential we could lose people just because of that study, and I want to be able to have that in front of us sooner rather than later. The other part of that is, and I'm going to be the bad guy, I think that it's time for us to look at the, the stipends for the mayoral stipend and the Assembly stipend, because I think that a lot of people are not running for office, because there is no money in running for office, and we might be able to entice more people to run for office if we can bring those up. So there you have it, I'm a bad guy.
First, you don't want to spend any money.
I want people to run for office.
I agree with you 100%. I think what I'm hearing here, Roxanne, is let's move this forward quickly, because we have to have the budget passed by June whatever.
10th.
Yeah, so we.
It's not going to happen.
Huh?
It's not going to happen.
Not going to happen.
You're dreaming. I don't know if it'll happen that quickly, but.
Don't be such a pessimist, Scott.
Well, look at, look at our, look at our advertising procedures that we got to go through. It's not going to happen.
Yeah, because you have to submit the, we have to.
You're dreaming.
Publish the RFP and give that two to three weeks at least, and then we have to review it, so that, it would be a tough pull.
Yeah, you're not going to have it done before. We're looking at passing the, to me, we're looking at passing the budget ideally June 2nd.
Yep.
That's when it needs to be done.
Or we can just take longer, and then it'll be the manager's budget that has to pass.
James? Okay, I'm going to be the bad guy again. I am going to be submitting a new budget. I already put one out to Dave Conrad and to Dora in October, November, I can't remember which, but I will resubmit that with some salary changes on line items for all departments.
Okay.
It'll be interesting to see, you know my opinion about budgets. That's the person that does the budget, we tell her what she can't spend, but if you got some good ideas, I'm all for it. With that, any more questions on this budget for tonight? Like I said, it'll be on every work session, one in way, shape, or form. Next work session, we're going to talk about using the ARCA money. Got it right. On vehicles and whatever. Uh, Scott?
That needs to be all-inclusive, not just vehicles. We need to talk, and I think.
About ARCA, yes.
And I don't know that it's going to be in two weeks, you're going to have that. Dave needs to be back here, so I think it's a little premature, Bill, to say you want it at the next work session.
Well, I think we can start the discussion.
But you need to get us all the information on what's allowed.
Yeah. Roxanne, when is Dave back?
I need to. May 3rd, thank you.
You're right, he won't be back. Okay, we'll set it for the work session, we'll give him a week to get his feet on the ground.
Yeah, because there's definite clarity we wanted to provide about, and a process that we need to establish for the future ARPA funding that we'll get, so there's a lot to talk about.
Any other questions on this budget? Okay, I want you to think about it. You've thought about it for a while, keep thinking about it, because we're going to keep coming back to it. And if the earthquake hits on June 1st and we can't meet until June 15th, that will be your budget. No, okay. The next item on the agenda for the work session is discussion of the Declaration of a Disaster of Emergency Ordinance. It's been a problem, because it doesn't sunset, for one thing, and it's still in effect, and since Scott, this is your, you've got the good idea on this, I'll let you take it.
Thank you, Bill. As several of us have been pushing to remove this off of the books, and what I'm looking to do is, is everything in the blue language that was created in, in May of 2020 gets removed, and we do that with the first reading at the meeting next week and a public hearing on, that would make it May 5th on there, that we remove this. And then over the course of the summer, rather than through the budget process, we go through and come up, because it, we need to, the agreement with the city and that needs to be looked at, you know, and including the school district in there, it's, it's going to take a little time, but I want this off of the books.
Just for my edification and more so for maybe some other people out there, if we take it off the books, we've ended our emergency, that's the important part right there. Okay? Any questions, any discussion? Anybody have any problems with this? I don't think so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just for clarif, clarification, you wanted an ordinance introduced next, this coming Thursday?
Correct.
Okay.
With the public hearing on May 3rd.
And that ordinance will be what's in front of you minus the blue. So the blue will become red.
May 5th, strikeout.
May 5th.
Strikeout, yeah.
Yes.
So it'll, the final public hearing will be the 5th, but what is it, the 21st? Oh. When's our next regular meeting?
First.
28th.
Next week.
Oh, next week.
Oh, which would be the 21st.
That's right, we're in a work session, so it'll be the 21st, so we'll, we'll introduce it on 21st. Any other discussion on that? I think that's pretty straightforward. With that, we'll go to packet review. Jeff?
Thank you. I, I don't have a problem with, with this or the proposal, I, I just don't want to necessarily walk away and not do, you know, and we put it off through the summer, I agree, put it off during the budget process, I just don't want it to sit on the shelf and, and not get revisited, and so I just don't want that to be lost in that process.
Yeah, there. Oh, I'm sorry.
That would be my only, my only concern with regards to it. I don't have a problem with the proposed language being eliminated from it, I just don't want us to forget about this.
There are also, we have an ordinance, and the city also has one, setting up the ESC and going through all of that thing, and there were a lot of changes proposed or recommended at the end of that when they did the look back, and I think the Assembly also wants to probably make some other changes, so we'll do, we'll tie all that together, and we'll start that, you know, at the end of June. Give us a week off from the budget and a week before we tackle that. Amy?
Thank you. Also, I don't know if you guys remember this, but I printed out a copy, and we can go back and print it out for everyone and make sure everyone has it, but back in September 2021, we got that long memo from Kyle Crowe and a suggested ordinance, and while I don't agree with everything that Mr. Crowe entered, there are a lot of good suggestions in there, so I think we kind of have like a starting point to look at and adjust that ordinance, and I just did that on a quick search through Borough Records, so I'll share that, and then we can all have that same idea put in our heads.
James?
I'm, I'm kind of in a different position, I guess. I would just rather repeal the ordinance altogether, because it was all made up in 2020, it's not like it's been an old ordinance, it is just the declaration that we put together in 2020, and so I would just rather repeal the entire ordinance, take it off the books, not just line item, things out of it.
Scott?
Part of the reason, James, is it spells out public meetings, what constitutes a quorum. This is general rules of the Assembly, not just the emergency. So it's, it speaks about generally teleconferencing is not allowed at regular meetings, only at work sessions, and, and I'm not in favor of doing away with that. That was, that was long fought a number of years ago, that's not new language on there, so that's my concern. This, the blue was the only thing that was changed, it was an existing ordinance prior to this being introduced.
Yes, I'm just talking about rescinding the ordinance FY 2020-19, not the rest of it, and going back to what it was.
That's what this does by, by.
Right, but it's just an easier process to repeal it than it is to line item it.
I disagree, because we're only line iteming through there. Look at what your blue is. You got part of A, all of B, C absences laid out there, rules of order, you know, and that, that's, that's where this emergency stuff was, was entered into, and that's what's created our problem, in that we can't get out of it, and now that the emergency has been dropped, as long as that stayed in there, that's why, that's why I voted against this to begin with, there was no sunset. Here we are, two years later, and, you know, so I don't want to get rid of the good stuff in there.
Let's, let's, let the clerk.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Assembly, what I remember also is that before this ordinance, there was another version of this ordinance that was put in place. Now, if you rescind this ordinance, I am wondering, it's a question that I'm going to need to ask, if you're going to refer to the previous version, and that's going to defeat the whole intent of what you're doing right now. I think the cleaner way to do this is to do the strikeouts, because it completely eliminates it and reverts you back to the original code, you know, before all the other changes.
What's that?
Thank you.
I know, thank you, thank you, Dora.
You just called me Dora.
Thank you, Nova. It's that age factor.
Yeah. All right, so I, I think, I think we know where we're going with this.
I think I have my marching orders, so I'll present this before you next Thursday, and then it will be up for public hearing at the first meeting in May.
Right.
Thank you.
So we go to packet review, and I'm not going to jump into my other one. Oh, yes, you're right.
Oh. I forgot that there's the, no, just kidding. Is it clerk's comments?
You can say I have none.
Well, I do have news regarding the assistant clerk position. We advertise in-house today, and it will close next Wednesday, and then it's also going out to the public tomorrow. It's going to be advertised externally tomorrow. I have touched on the election, the election things that I'm working on, like the State of Division, Division of Elections not lending us the equipment, so I'm working on that right now, I'm contacting my friends already with Dominion, and also I've touched on the Section 203 voting, that we're, we're going to come up with a plan. I need to submit a plan to the Department of Justice regarding that. Board of Equalization, the hearing is going to be on May 2nd, we're also preparing for that, we held a training on Tuesday, and it was well-attended by the board members. Catching up on other things, and we're working on a few projects in the office, in addition to our day-to-day task, we were able to squeeze in some time to clean up the office, do a little bit of spring cleaning, and Lena said our office feels airy and light. She said it feels light. So in closing, I want to thank everyone for the warm welcome that you've given me. It's really, I'm really glad to be back home. Thank you.
It's good to have you back home. Okay, manager's comments.
Well, first off, I really wanted to thank the Assembly for all the feedback tonight regarding the budget, and we look forward to hearing more feedback and working with you with your thoughts and concerns going forward. So in other news, I just wanted to update the Assembly that we're working with Scott Brandt Erickson, because one of the trials that he's working on is requiring so much information from public information requests, so that's been really inundating, and I really thank Nova, because she's convening all of that and making sure that we're doing everything we need to get that done. In other news, I heard today that the Chinnyack School had an issue, because there's a dumpster very close to their school, and a bear has been frequenting it, and so what I did is I reached out to the state troopers and got some advice about using bleach in a spray bottle to spray the dumpster in the inner rim, and then I've been working with Matt, and Matt is working with Alaska Waste. And then I've been working with Matt and Matt is working with Alaska Waste to figure out how we can locate that dumpster further away from the school and possibly place another dumpster in the community so that the bear won't be so attracted to that area. But we hope that that will help the school with staying safe. And in the discussion with the troopers, I was also made aware that there have been some very significant problems with bears in our community already. One bear that tried to break into a home and did get into a home, and then bears also trying to break into cars. So I just really want.
We're now answering a call from the queue.
I just really want everyone to be very bear aware, be very bear aware and very safe. Uh, in other news, we had a rescue that we took part in. There was a woman who went hiking on her own and she took off from White Sands Beach and went up the Minashka Mountain. And unfortunately, she really did some damage to her ankle. Boy, was she lucky that there were members of the Coast Guard that were also in that exact area and found her. And so one went back to the beach to get help after emergency services were called. So our Bayside Fire Chief responded, but then it was great partnership with our Coast Guard, helicoptered her out and she is safe. She lived. We are very grateful for that partnership. And I really wanted to thank the Alex Haley Coast Guard, uh, fellows that helped us with this because they stayed here the whole time.
Call from the queue.
And made sure that she got taken care of and was safe. Wanted to update the Assembly too, that last Friday, I provided testimony to the Senate, Alaska Senate Finance Committee about different concerns that we had in our community. And I worked with Assembly Member Art to figure out what those priorities were that we would advocate for. And so I'm glad I could take part in that. And my last update is that we got a complaint that there was smoldering issues with the sea breeze demolition that happened of a house. And so we worked with, uh, the Bayside Fire Chief and he went out and took a look at it. And then forestry had also been contacted by members of the community. So we took the advice of the forestry person who was on site and did everything necessary. And we think we have finally put this issue to bed, but we'll be happy to respond to any other concerns. But that included significant dousing of the area, ways that we dug things up and absolutely put any issue to sleep. You may see some steam rising from it because it is some decomposition and that can be expected. But we hope there will be no more smoker issues for that area. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Any questions for the manager? With that, um, I think we can move on and get through packet review fairly quickly. First one is ordinance number FY 2022. It's the public hearing of an ordinance you've already heard about for three times, changing the code regarding, uh, communication tower approval criteria. Staff report, please.
So the mayor has it down. It is changing the approval criteria from 60 days to 90 days to go with all of the other ordinances that, or, excuse me, um, approvals that we have for conditional use or anything like that. It's pretty straightforward. We do have one communication tower, um, that's going to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And it was pretty cool. I wish I would have remembered, but we got a little postcard from the FAA. So they're looking into it too and making sure that, um, that the borough is aware that they want to put this 100-foot pole up, so.
Questions? I think we've probably, this is about the third time you've heard it, I think. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is public hearing ordinance FY 2022 dash 16, who establishing an opioid settlement fund. Roxanne, staff report.
Well, I'll take over for Dora. This is just creating a fund so that we can start to get the funding that was settled to address opioids, uh, opioid issues in our community. And we're still in the process of learning if we can accrue that money and different ways that we can spend that money.
So this is just establishing so we can track it for?
It's a fiduciary designation, basically.
Scott Smiley.
Have you, uh, talked to AML about what they're planning to do about this? I mean, it's such a insult, I guess.
I'd be happy to reach out to Nils because Nils also sent me an email that I need to respond to, so I'll be happy to ask about that too.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jared?
Just a very small, uh, clarifying question. The, um, in the memo, the discussion says that the shares 10,000 a year between the next 10 to 18 years, but it's, but in the ordinance, it's, it's definitely 18 years. Line 19 says over an 18-year period. So, um, I'm just curious why, is there a reason for the 10 to 18-year period? Or is it definitely 18 years?
I wonder.
That might be a Dora question.
Uh, yeah, I wonder if we put in 18 just in case it went up to 18.
Oh, okay.
I'm guessing.
So like a minimum of 10 years, the possibility of up to 18?
I would guess that's why it's like that. And I don't know if Dora's still on the line, but.
I, I am here.
Okay.
Some of this was, um, plagiarized from earlier stuff. So the 10 to 18 at the time was a guess before I got the official ordinance from the attorney. And I didn't go back and take the 10 out, but it's a long-term, so staff felt it was best to put it in separate funds.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, it moves us into contracts. Contract FY 202117, which is a change order with CH2M Hill Engineering for the landfill stage three closure, not to exceed 25,000. Staff report, please.
Um, this is a change order with the contract we have with, uh, CH2M Hill is also Jacobs Engineering, um, for the landfill stage three closure project. Uh, in the original contract, they had an amount included for services during construction, um, and bidding assistance. And during the design and the bid phases, we had two substantial changes. Um, one was, uh, working with the USDA on requirements they had for the bid documents, mainly contract specifications. Uh, and there was a lot of back and forth and it took a lot of time on Jacobs' part to incorporate all those changes to the bid specs. So there was a significant amount of effort expended there that was not anticipated when the original contract was approved. And the other change was, uh, discussion during bidding, um, of blasting and processing of rock out at the landfill specifically for the project. And then also additional for cover rock left over at the end of the project. So both those changes really took, uh, a substantial amount of time that was not anticipated when the original contract was approved. So they've requested an additional $25,000, which is a time and materials, not to exceed amount, it's not a lump sum, to get us through the completion of the project.
Scott?
Thank you, Matt. Um, part of my question is, it's a little confusing with, with Jacobs is on other professional contracts when we see these change orders, it lists out what the hourly charges are because it's a time and materials. They have lump sum figures. Uh, for instance, on page 27, 80% design, 54,300. 100% design, another 21,200. Bid and construction services, 17,100. So I'm taking it that this 25,000 is added to number three, bid and construction services.
Correct.
But when you say it's a time and material proposal, I don't see what's, what's the charges per hour or that, that they're charging for different people like we would on other design projects. For instance, Jensen Yorbalat or Wall.
I think, I think it's, because they're such a big company, I think it's kind of difficult for them to, to really break it down that way. Um, right now, you know, just for the Litchay Treatment Plant, um, addition, for example, you know, they have, we're going through the submittal process and they have so many engineers all over the country who are responding to these things that I think it's just hard for them to say, okay, this guy's going to spend six hours, this guy's going to spend 10 hours, you know? So I think, and I'm just speculating at this point, but I think that's why they do it that way. But we do, when we get, we get invoices with itemized hours and rates and personnel. So we can see when they bill, what, who they're billing, who's doing what, how much they're billing for. So that's why we went through, when this first came up, we went through the invoices and said, well, where'd you spend all the money? And that's, you know, went through, did an analysis of that and talked to them. Um, so we do get that information, but it is not in the proposal, you're correct. But it is, everything we do with them is, is time and materials.
I, I appreciate that explanation. You, you basically feel comfortable with this change order at, estimated at 25,000?
Yeah, and I don't, I, I don't anticipate spending 25,000.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments on the contract? Thank you, Matt.
Sure.
Ordinances for introduction, that'll be that 2020-19 ordinance on the, uh, declaration of the emergency. That will be on there. Other items, authorization is for fire protection area number one to move forward with the advertisement of the invitation for bid for Bayside Fire Station Chief's responsive vehicle purchase. Roxanne?
I feel like the title says most of what will be considered. I look forward to a lively discussion on it, is what I can say.
Anybody want to have a discussion tonight? Are we going to wait until the meeting? Wait till the meeting? Okay. All right, we're good. That things us to Assembly member comments. And, uh, Amy, we'll start with you since you're sitting right here.
Nothing tonight.
Jeff?
My only comment would be, um, the bleach solution for the dumpster. If that doesn't work, uh, another solution that does work, and I use it up in the bay in the summer to keep the bears off my equipment, is a Pine Sol and a bug sprayer. And they don't like Pine Sol at all.
Yeah, I've heard Lysol as the alternative, but they had bleach, so we won't with that.
Roxanne, by the way, I should tell you that I, I got a call from, from Dave because this all trickled back to him and he called me on another matter and said that if all else fails, they'll move that dumpster and they'll put a third dumpster in by where the Kelson Pond is, where the old maintenance shed used to be, until we get that pad built. But it, I think it's behooves us to move quickly on building that pad. Because once we've been notified that this is a safety issue, we don't want anybody hurt around those dumpsters, especially in the school.
Yeah, and Alaska Waste is really helping out with this and they're acting very quickly. So we're going to get this remedied very fast because we know how concerning it is.
Great, thank you. Scott Smiley, no comment. Jared?
Um, just, I, I won't be at next week's regular meeting. I'll be, uh, directing a, uh, a production of Lord of the Flies, which, as you may remember, is a story of when kids get together and try to set up a government and have meetings. So, um, so I'll be at meetings. It'll just be run by kids who kill each other. So I'll miss you next week.
I remember that was a rather grisly book.
Oh, yes.
Joe? I have no comment tonight, thank you. James?
I've said too much.
Scott?
No further comments.
Mayor's comments, I, I'm ready to go home. So let's call it quits and we'll all meet here next week, same time, same station.
Bye, Dora.
Good night.